Hi, Mr. Clerk, do you want to call the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll take attendance first.
Yes, sir.
Councillor Cooperow, Councillor Teneri Garcia, Councillor Robinson, Councillor Taylor, Councillor Lopez, Councillor Vega Maldonado, Councillor Brown, Councillor Vito, Councillor De Jesus, and Councillor Judy Garcia. You have six members present. The chairman, you have a quorum. The meeting is for the following subject matter: the FY 2023 tax rates. Invited to attend: City Manager Tom Ambrosino, Ted Kostakian, Chief Assessor, Jim Sullivan, Assistant Assessor, all members of the City Council, any members of the public.
Okay, can we just take a roll? Who's here that we were invited? I know Cheryl Walker.
I checked them off.
You checked them off?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, you want to give us an open intro?
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. President. So, thank you, councillors. I appreciate the chance to come before you tonight and to make a presentation on what I expect will be the tax rates for the fiscal year 2023. So, those of you who have been here before, the presentation I'm going to give tonight is pretty standard. It's the same format that I've done in past years, sort of going through the way we set the tax rate, what the values are, and what the impact is going to be on various classes of property. There is no vote necessary tonight. There will be a public hearing on this tax rate at the meeting of Monday, November 21st. And at that meeting, I will ask you to take the two required votes that are required of every municipal legislative body. And these are the same votes that a city council does in every community. There are two required votes. The first is a vote on what's known as the minimum residential factor, and that determines the split in the tax rate. We have historically done a split tax rate here in Chelsea, and historically, for the last generation or more, provided residential property owners with the best benefit we can, which is to shift, which is to do the 175% shift. It means that commercial industrial taxpayers pay 1.75% more than they otherwise would pay on a flat tax rate. We've always done that. I would strongly advise you to do that again. The second vote that some municipalities take is on adoption of the specific percentage of the residential exemption. The maximum residential exemption allowed by statute is 35%. For the last few years, Chelsea has been at 35%. And again, I will be recommending that you do that as well. Both those votes need to happen following the public hearing on November 21st. Once those two votes are completed, then the city can submit to the Department of Revenue its request that they approve our tax rate. And I'll be able to tell you tonight what I expect that tax rate to be. It does sometimes change by a few pennies when we do the final calculations with the Department of Revenue, but these numbers should be reasonably close. So, let me just go through this presentation. It's pretty straightforward, and this year, it's very positive news for our residential taxpayers. So, let me just start at the beginning. So, first, you know, we always start with how much money do we need to operate this city? And so, this shows that for fiscal year '23, we need to generate $236 million. That's our total budget. That includes all the amounts you have appropriated for FY '23. It includes all of our water and sewer costs that have to be paid for with water and sewer rates. It includes the overlay reserve. That's the special reserve we have to set aside each year to pay for people who come in and get a rebate because their taxes were deemed to be too high, because their values were off. That happens every year. And we give people some exemptions. We have to take care of that. And charges from the Commonwealth. Those are the cherry sheet charges that exist. When you get a cherry sheet, you get both revenue and charges. And so, the charges are part of our cost. And so, with all those four factors added together, the city to operate in fiscal year '23 is required to raise over $236 million. That's our budget. Now, how do we raise that? There are three major ways to raise revenue for a city. The first is state aid, the cherry sheet. And this year, the cherry sheet is $118 million. That's how much we get in revenue from the state. Most of it is for the school department. There's some money for the city. The second thing, I'm going to skip the three, is local property taxes. So, the cherry sheet number is usually known by the city by midsummer. We know it definitively once the legislature approves the final budget. The local property tax number is also something we know relatively early because it's just a calculation. It's based on Proposition 2.5. You take your total levy from the previous year, you multiply it by 2.5%, and that's what you can raise the next year. So, that $72.1 million is what we are allowed to raise in Proposition 2, under Proposition 2.5. You can add to that the new growth. Usually, we don't get that number until October because that takes a lot of calculation by our assessors to figure out what new buildings happened, what new development occurred, and then give it a value. And so, typically, it takes until, while I'll know that property tax number in December for the next year because I just calculated from a previous year's levy, the new growth is something that always takes a while. We usually get around beginning of October. So, that takes care of three. It's the 72 million plus the 3 million is what we can raise in property taxes. The differential between what we get from state aid and what we get from local property taxes, we have to raise locally in local receipts. It's just a math issue. You take the 236, you subtract the state aid, you subtract the local property taxes, you subtract new growth, and that tells you this is how much you got to raise locally. If you can't do it from local receipts, motor vehicle excise tax, room excise, meals tax, 40-You took tickets, building permits, et cetera, then you have to dip into reserves. But thankfully, in fiscal year 2023, we do not have to dip into reserves because we estimate that we will be able to raise $42 million in local receipts, just given what our historical receipts have been over the last few years. And so, this year, as you know, we did not appropriate any money from reserves to balance this budget. That's not always been the case. This is, most years, we have appropriated about $1 million. That's a pretty reasonable number. But this year, thankfully, no need to dip into any reserves to balance our budget. This is just going to talk again, just illustrate what Proposition 2.5 really is. I think by now, most of you know it. You know, the last year's levy was 70.3 million. Multiply that by 2.5. That's how much new taxes we can raise, is 1.7 million. You add that to the previous levy, and you get the total new levy number. And then, you add on that the new growth, and you have your total levy limit. This year, 75.293 million. How that 75.3 million is allocated among individual taxpayers, that all depends on the values of their property. There's no limit on how much an individual tax bill can go up. There's no 2.5% cap on that. The 2.5% cap, the Proposition 2.5 limit is on the total pie. Every individual taxpayer will be, will share in that pie a little differently depending upon the adjustment in their value. And each year, we are required to revalue property, and that's what the assessors do. And that's just what I just said. Individual properties can have taxes that certainly rise more than 2.5%, and we've seen that many times. So, what are these values that I talk about? Well, again, annual valuation updates are mandatory. You have to revalue property every year or DOR won't let you set a tax rate. That started in fiscal year 2005. Before that, you only had to revalue properties every three years, which made it much easier for municipal leaders. But now, it's every year. You've got to do, you've got to certify values every five years. You've got to get into property every 10 years. And so, there are these schedules that DOR requires to ensure that valuations stay accurate and current. The last year, we did a full five-year revaluation and got values certified, was in FY '20. We don't have to do that this year. This is what we call an interim valuation year. I think in FY '25, we'll have to be back at the full certification. So, what are assessors required to do? What is evaluation? Well, you're supposed to value property at full and fair cash value, which is called fair market value, what a willing buyer would pay to a willing seller in an open, fair market transaction. That's what the rules are. And so, usually, that's easy for residential properties where there's lots of sales because basically, you just look at past sales, and then you're able to determine what values have on the open market. The one thing to keep in mind, which is a little odd about municipal valuation, is that for fiscal year '23, for the tax bills that are going to come out, the actual tax bill is going to come out on January 1, 2023. We're basing that on what that property was valued on January 1, 2022. And that is based on sales in calendar year '21. So, you can see that municipal valuations always trail the market by around 18 months because for the bill that's going to come out in January 1, 2023, it's based on sales that happened in 2021. So, we are usually behind every municipality. This isn't you, Chelsea. You're behind the times by about 18 months. So, when values are rising, people are getting a little break. When values are dropping, usually, their bill is reflecting values from a year and a half that might be higher than they really are when they're getting that bill. That's just the nature of municipal valuations. So, this year, we did that revaluation, and these are the changes in values. Everything is up. But what's significant is what you see at the bottom, those large increases this year for commercial and industrial parcels. And we've been closely looking at those over the last few years because those are the ones where we felt we have been undervalued for a while. We've been collecting income statements and expense statements from lots of our property owners, and we feel like we have a better handle on those properties now. That's still a work in progress. I think I had said, the last two years, this is probably a three-year effort, but we are well underway here. And you can see that this is where the values are rising the most in fiscal year 2023 compared to fiscal year 2022. There are increases in residential properties as well, but not as substantial. And that has an impact on the tax rate because it means that these commercial and industrial properties are going to absorb more of the tax increase than residential property owners. The pie is going to shift a little bit.
Mr. Manager, if you don't mind, can we take a few questions at this point?
I have a question. Councillor Damali.
Sorry, I didn't realize. I thought you had already acknowledged me. Sorry, Mr. Peddled it. Um, when, I just want to know, do we know how many of these?
I'm sorry, councillor, can you speak in your mic so we can hear?
Yes, I'm sorry. Do we know how many of the 2, 3, or 4-plus apartment complexes are owner occupied? Is that data that this office would have?
Yes, I do think we know how many owner occupied properties fall into each of these categories.
And specifically, the apartments that are 4+?
Yes, there aren't a lot, but we know that number. About 4% of the total. How many does that amount to? About 2,800? 345 apartments that are 4+ that are owner occupied?
Yep.
Oh, of the 345, I'm sorry. Of the 345 apartments 4+, only about 3% of those are owner occupied.
Okay, that's a better number.
Which would mean that these are people that are using these as for-profit entities?
Correct.
And so...
But nonetheless, they still are assessed as residential properties. That's a requirement of the law.
I'm just, because the 10% value change. I mean, I understand, like, single families and 2 families. I'm sure there's an incentive, some type of incentive for them being owner occupied, right?
The incentive of being owner occupied is that you get a huge tax break. Your 35% residential exemption is worth about $2,900.
And I'm assuming that the majority of those owner occupied residential units are 2 and 3 family?
They fall all across these four categories.
Oh, a single family as well.
2 and 3, yes.
Okay, I don't know, it just seems...
That's where the overwhelming majority of owner occupied properties are.
Yeah. I don't know, I just feel like, I understand that we have to go up every year. I'm not complaining. I just feel like we continue to give breaks to those that are for profit as opposed to taking care of the people that are here.
So, you get a break if you own and occupy the unit. So, that is your break. That's what the residential exemption provides for. We can't discriminate between a three-family homeowner that occupies a property and a one-family. It's if you own and occupy, no matter how many units you have, you will get that exemption.
I understand, thank you.
Any councillor have a question at this level? I'm sorry? We just want, we will finish, but we want, ask if you have a question. Okay, so you don't have a question up until this point, correct?
So, one of the places we specifically focused on this year was mixed-use properties. Those are typically large apartment buildings that have a commercial unit on the bottom. Last year, if you recall, we spent a lot of effort on 4+ apartment units, but we didn't do the 130+ that were mixed-use. And so, we got a really good revaluation on our large apartment units last year. But the ones that were still a bit out of whack, and there was a lot of discussion at the council this, were those that had a commercial component because we had not looked at those. This year, we retained the same firm that helped us last year, John Ryan. Is he here if anyone has any questions? To look specifically at this 130-plus group of mixed-use. And he did the same careful assessment of those that he had done with the apartments. And we have revalued them, and we feel that they are now more accurately reflect fair market value than they did in the past. And as you can see, the new valuations for just that class alone added over $42 million to our values. Now, just as we had lots of appeals from apartment owners because their values went up significantly last year, we are likely to get lots of appeals from mixed-use. We will set aside a substantial amount in overlay reserve to make sure we can handle whatever abatements have to be given out for that. So, just getting back to the two things that we do to help the residential property owners, we have a split tax rate. The maximum shift is 175. And you'll be asked to vote on that. The other thing we do is the residential exemption. 35% is the max. I will ask you to do that as well. Assuming you take both of those votes for FY '23, then the exemption will be worth $2,893, almost $2,900. The, with that exemption, and with the split tax rate, the residential rate is going to be about $12.41 per thousand, and the commercial rate is going to be $2,492 per thousand. Again, these numbers can change slightly. They're both lower than the rates last year.
I'm sorry, can you tell me what they were last year?
Yes, the residential rate last year was $13.25, and the commercial rate last year was $25.72. So, this is a draw.
Why did it go down?
Usually, it goes down because values go up. So, when values go up, the rate drops.
Okay, okay.
So, this is the most important slide for you that you're going to see next. This is what you're going to get calls on. What's my tax bill likely to look like? And so, what I'm going to give you now is what we estimate to be the average impact in these residential classes. It does not mean that this is going to be the resident every individual's bill, but on average, this is what we expect the impact to be. So, for a single, this is really good news. So, virtually, everyone is seeing a reduction in their average tax bill. The exception is single-family homeowners who are likely to see an increase of $13 for the whole year, which is half a percent. So, you can see at the end, the annual percentage change. Again, these are average tax bills for each of these classes of property: single families, condos, 2 families, and 3 families. The overwhelming majority of our owner occupants are in these categories, and they are all seeing either a reduction or an extremely small increase in the case of single-family homeowners. So, this is really, I think, good news for the residents of Chelsea this particular year. And it's a rare thing because we don't typically see this. Now, if someone is still struggling with their bill, notwithstanding this reasonable impact, we still have that COVID Homeowners Assistance Program that the council voted a couple of years ago. There is still money left in this account. This is first come, first served. As of about three weeks ago, when I prepared these slides, we still had $267,000 left out of that appropriation of $750,000. So, we continue to encourage people to take advantage of this. The requirements of the program that you set up are that you have to be an owner occupant. You have to have area median income of no more than 100% of AMI. And a one-family condo, you get up to $5,000. This is a pure grant. Two families can get up to $8,000. Three to four families can get up to $10,000. So, for those who might be struggling, we encourage you to contact our Housing and Community Development Office. This is a great program, thanks to the City Council, and it still exists. We have not exhausted all of the funds. We do a couple of other exemptions. These are statutory exemptions where the council has taken some local options to bump up the limits. So, the Clause 17E exemption. There's no income limits to this. You can make as much money as you want. You do have to be 70 years or older for this one. There are asset limits, which you can see here. This exemption is, has a base value of $214.40, but we double all of our exemptions. That's another vote the council has taken in the past. And so, this will be worth $428. And then, the more valuable exemption is this Clause 41D. This is for people 65 years or older. But this does have more stringent limits. It has income limits, and it has asset limits. But there are certainly many owner occupants in Chelsea who can qualify for this if they're 65 or older. I would encourage them to contact the Assessors' Office. The value of this exemption is $1,000 annually. Again, we double all the exemptions. As I said, we have previously voted to double exemptions. We also have the tax break, as you know, for small commercial owners, small business owners. If their personal property is valued at less than $10,000, their personal property is fully exempt from taxation. That's another vote the council has previously taken, and these all remain in effect. So, with that said, you've got two votes to take in order to implement these, the impact that I just mentioned. On November 21st, after the public hearing, you need to vote the shift, and we'll be recommending the vote to 175%. And you need to vote the residential exemption, and we'll be advocating for the full 35%. And with that, I'll take any questions. The assessors are here, and John Ryan is here if you want to ask about anything pertaining to his work.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Councillor Robinson.
Yes, I got two questions. The first one is, if a taxpayer does not agree with their assessment, they can file for an abatement with the assessor. How many abatements the assessing department received this year? And how many abatement applications were from low-income tax credit housing sites?
So, I'll have to have the assessor answer that. I just caution residents who get their tax bill, you only have 30 days to file for that, to contest your value. 30 days from the date you get that tax bill. Typically, we mail them on January 1. Typically means by the end of January, you've got to file for that abatement.
Good evening. Thank you, councillor, for the question. The assessing department for the fiscal year '22 values received 175 applications for abatement. You mentioned low-income tax credit housing. While I can't describe the exact owners because that's privileged information, I can say that over half of our abatement applications were for properties that were low-income tax credit housing.
Then, a follow-up to that is, compare the market rate apartments and how low-income tax credit housing sites valued. And what is that to the tax collection implications of this valuation?
So, the state court, these, yes, sir.
Can I have a question, please, be repeated?
Yep.
Compared to the market rate apartments, how many are low-income tax credit housing sites valued? And what is the tax collection implications of this valuation?
So, low-income tax credit housings have a deed restriction. And the appellate tax board, which is the appeals court that we go to when our Board of Assessors does not agree with the applicant, you know, the both parties go to the appellate tax board. Their guidance through case precedent that they've decided is that we have to use actual contract rent and actual expenses on those low-income tax credit housing. Therefore, in our experience here, those are valued, I would say, up to 40% lower than what you would see market rate valued at.
Thanks. Is that it, councillor? Councillor, is that it? Any other councillor have a question? Councillor Lopez? Yep.
On the 35, what is the appropriation? Or this council?
35% residential exemption. So, 35% of your, of the average value is exempt from taxation.
Okay, let's say I'm a homeowner, and I don't know I can qualify for that. Do we let them know, or we don't?
I can turn to assessors to how we advertise that. We have about 2,800 people who have that exemption. How we advertise that, I'll leave to the assessor.
So, we have a little over 5,500 properties that would be eligible. When a new home is bought in Chelsea, you know, condo, 2-family, 3-family, single-family, we send in the mail to them an application for the residential exemption. By these efforts, we have about 2,700 households that receive the residential exemption. So, about half.
Okay, at this moment, everybody who owns and live in their house are getting their residential exemption?
We have to have an application on file. We're very rigorous in sending notices in the mail to them if we do believe that they live there. We also do an exercise where we pull the voting rolls in, We also do an exercise where we pull the voting rolls in, which is public information. And anyone who's voting here, and owns a home here, and is not getting the residential exemption, will follow up with another notice in the mail, to make sure they're, they're aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
But you do have to apply, to do it.
Counselor Recupero?
From what I see over here...
The microphone, microphone.
Please speak into the mic.
Good evening. From what I see here, this year, you seem to have done a very good job. Everybody seems to be equal across the board. You're not killing three-family homeowners anymore. Seems like you only shifted five-point-three to them, this year. Why did such a, a shift so low to three families? What, what was that? Where did you make up the difference in four and five families?
So this is all a matter of valuations. It's not us doing anything. It's what the market is telling us the values of property are. So, where, when, if you take a look at page ten of this sheet, uh, this, uh, handout I gave, you'll see where the value changes have occurred. And you'll see that it's the large apartment buildings and the commercial industrial properties that are taking the brunt of any tax increases this year. Because while everyone's value has gone up, their values have gone up substantially more. And so, the tax pie is shifting away from some residential owners towards that category of property.
This is good. For years, it's always been the three-family homeowners that have been buried. Now, uh, the next question I have, so, is it more beneficial for the city to have industrial than it is to do more affordable housing? Because affordable housing doesn't give you tax, right? If you build more affordable housing in this city, right? Would the burden go back to the homeowners? Or, if you had resi, here's the que, the bottom, the question I wanna ask. It's a simple question. This, you shifted to the commercial, so they picked up the difference, more or less. So, affordable housing, when you build more affordable housing, what does that do? Does that increase the tax burden of the homeowners that are here? Or, I, I actually want to know, or other people outside will want to know the same thing. The more affordable housing you have, the less taxes the city rakes in from them. So the burden is shifted back to the homeowners that have it. Is that true or not?
No.
No, it's not, okay, explain to me why it ain't.
So, from a pure economic consideration, it's always better for a city to develop with commercial and industrial property than residential property. You're, you're gonna generate more tax dollars from residential and commercial, uh, development. So that's always preferable, from a pure economic standpoint, because it means that your taxes, the pie, is gonna shift to commercial industrial and take the burden off residential tax.
Okay, I understand that, that, that's not...
So, from a pure economic reason, you would rather have commercial development. But there are often public policy reasons why you wanna develop housing. And there are public policy reasons why you wanna develop affordable housing. If you develop more affordable housing, it doesn't mean that more gets shifted to the other residential owners. Any new development, even if it's affordable, is gonna generate new tax dollars for the city.
Do they pay the same amount of tax as a homeowner?
No, they are not. They are paying, their properties are gonna be valued less.
Okay, but here's the question I'm saying. Over here, isn't it more profitable to the city to invest in commercial, which gives the maximum tax? Instead of more affordable housing, what it does is it brings more people into our city, one. Then you have to have more services. So it's a bigger burden, and they're paying less money. Aren't they, if they're paying, what is the actual tax rate that they pay? Let's say I own a three-family, he owns a three-family. Let's say our tax rate is ninety percent. If, he converted his to affordable housing now, would he still pay the same ninety percent, or would it go down?
Yes, he would, Counselor. We went over that earlier. That's under the four houses, the four units, the earliest slide.
No, but the, did you ask him about affordable housing?
He actually, well, he, not directly, but he talked about the certain amount of units. So whether you have one or four, you're still in the same bracket.
Yeah, I understand that, that's what I said.
Okay, there, I'm just, there is no question that, an affordable, if you have two apartment buildings, one is a market rate unit, and one is an affordable deed restricted building, and they're exactly the same, the market rate unit is gonna have a much higher value than the affordable.
Okay, that's the question that you, you just answered. So in other words, someone that has a, a regular home, and someone that has affordable, right, that does affordable housing, they don't pay the same tax rate, right?
Correct. Well, they pay the same rate, but the values are gonna be different.
Right, alright. Okay, so isn't it better for, what is the amount of affordable housing we have in this city?
We have about nineteen percent affordable housing of our total housing stock, yes.
What is the average state? What is the average for the state?
There are, you know, we probably have one of the highest. It's not the highest, but it's one of the highest in the state.
The highest?
We do not have the highest, no.
Second highest we got? Alright, so, for us to keep our tax rate low each year, right? Instead of going up so high, isn't it more? The question, I'm going back to the same question I asked. Isn't it better for the city to invest, get people to come in and invest in businesses?
If your only consideration, if your only policy consideration is generating the most money for the city, you are better served encouraging commercial and industrial growth over residential growth. That is absolutely true. But, there are public policy reasons for building housing.
I understand that.
One of which is, it's a housing crisis, and there's not enough housing in this whole region.
I'm not, I'm not arguing the point. I'm for affordable housing all day long. But sometimes I see in this city, affordable, it doesn't mean it's affordable for the people of this city. And in return, what happens is, you look up how many people of this city are actually living in these affordable units. That's, they, you should have a, a study and see what is the percentage of people. So we're building affordable housing, not for the people of Chelsea, for them to live here, but yet, we are taking up the burden, more or less. We are paying higher taxes. The people that live here, not only the homeowners, the renters. The renters are the one that are paying the brunt, because their rents go up. So, tell the actual, what it is. It's the renters that are paying more of everything. So the more buildings you have that have this type of affordability, which pay less money than the rest, the people that live here, the actual renters, have to pay.
Okay, Counselor, we got your question.
What?
We have your question.
Those who oppose affordable housing often use that argument. The contrary argument is, there's a public policy reason for advocating for more affordable housing.
But we already met the public, don't, if this, if we are the second highest in the whole state, that means we have done above and beyond.
We have done above and beyond many, but that does not mean that you have adequate affordable housing.
You're never gonna have adequate affordable housing nowhere.
Counselor, but out of respect, we do have other Counselors that would like to speak, and we have sort of...
Did I do my five minutes? Uh, what, what is the time limit I can speak? Did you clock me?
But you went over, Counselor, out of respect.
Did I go over for?
Yeah.
I went over?
So, so Counselor, but we can ask those questions again. We're gonna have a public hearing coming up on the twenty-first.
Okay, let's be honest. This is a pol, this is a public policy debate. And people can reasonably disagree on this. I think there are reasonable arguments on both sides. I happen to have a pretty obvious position on this. But I'm not saying those with an opposite view are, you know, somehow, you know, doing something wrong. It's a, this is a public policy debate that goes on, not just in Chelsea, but everywhere.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
So, I just wanna dovetail off of what, uh, Counselor Recupero was saying. So, the question, I think, people, most people, I think, agree that we need affordable housing. The question is, do, do we put that affordable housing here in Chelsea? Or, do we take a larger view of the situation and try to build affordable housing where it's actually cheaper to build, cheaper to purchase land, making it more reasonable for developers to, to, uh, develop tho, that affordable, those affordable housing units? So, so this is the, like, you said that we have done above and beyond some, but not all. But it seems like we've gone above and beyond all but one. And the only reason why we're not the first is because that one is a very tiny, uh, municipality that, that, uh, that basically doesn't have very many units at all. So, so I, I just, to me, if we're gonna have this discussion, I think that, that, and especially since we are Chelsea City Council, and, and, and if, if, you know, sometimes people get labeled pro or anti-this, or anti-that, or pro-this, or pro-that. But it's not, that's not really the whole enchilada, you know? I think there are other ways to solve these problems without necessarily burdening, um, the, the, the taxpayers of this city, which are, this is not a wealthy city. I mean, we, 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 we...
Counselor, I'm sorry. Counselor Taylor's got the call.
But, but he's right. I mean, the, the tenants too, because the tenants, the renters, do end up paying the bills for those landlords. So, so, you know, I think this is a worthy discussion to have. And to try to figure out, and maybe work in conjunction with, um, you know, people at the state level, to try to figure some of this out. Instead of always trying to take the more and more and more burden on ourselves, because most people out there in the public think, "Oh yeah, we're for affordable housing, that's great. We want more, we want more, 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 more." But yet, they don't understand the economic kind of repercussions of, of what's going on when other communities also need to take up some of this burden, that Chelsea cannot, uh, shoulder all this burden by itself. And then the fact that we are number two out of all those cities and towns in the Commonwealth, I mean, you know, it, it is what it is. I, 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 I believe that we need more affordable housing, I really do. But I, I, I'm just not convinced that, you know, we have a lot of room. We don't have much room here at all.
I just wanna correct one s, underlying assumption, make sure people understand this. If everything's, if we build an affordable housing development, that does not mean that residential taxpayers' taxes are going up. What it might mean is that they may not be as positively impacted if instead of building that affordable unit, we had built a market rate unit, which would have been valued more, or we had built a major commercial development. If everything stayed exactly the same, expenses didn't change, value didn't change, and the only thing that changed one year to the next is that we built one large affordable housing unit, the residential taxes would go down, because that building would take up a little bit of the tax bill. What is true is that you'd be even better off if it were a market rate unit for the other taxpayers. And you'd be even better off than that if it were a commercial industrial development.
Right, right.
It doesn't mean your taxes are going up, because we're building an affordable unit.
I, I think that's relative, though. So, I mean, so, so I get, I, I understand what you're saying. And, uh, but, uh, you know, I just think that, I just think that it's always good to, to have more of a balance of things. Because, I mean, i- in, in all kinds of ways in life, you know? I think, I think having a balanced approach to things is, and, 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 you know, I, I, I just wanna, I just wanna interject this into the discourse, that, that if, if you're, if you're saying we have enough affordable housing in Chelsea, doesn't mean that we have enough affordable housing in the state. Or that, and, and that if we build affordable housing here, that doesn't mean that people in Chelsea are gonna get it. Because they're coming from Boston, or wherever else, to, to, we, there's no way to guarantee that to Chelsea people. So...
Well, there are preferences, and you can have a seventy percent preference for Chelsea residents, which is what we try to ensure. But I, I hear your point, you're right. The, the region as a whole needs to share in this effort.
Chelsea is not gonna solve the housing crisis.
It can't, right.
And so, it's impossible, that's why. But people, I think people out in the public need to understand this. And so it's, they don't, they don't misunderstand that, you know, if somebody says they're, you know, we, we need to build, that other communities need to start shouldering the burden, instead of just Chelsea. Chelsea's only one-point-eight square miles. So, we, we have a dearth of property. So, we need to, we need to really consider carefully how that gets allocated and to, and to what, uh, tax, because, you know, we do have a financial, uh, considerations to...
And I assure you, we do that. So I'll just give one example, just one, but it, it's gonna make my point. You know, we do sometimes say to developers and owners, "On this paso, we wanna see commercial industrial development and not housing." So, the example I'm gonna use is two-ninety-five Eastern. That is zoned as a waterfront district. Housing's allowed by right there. We were clear with that developer, "This is an area we've always envisioned for commercial industrial development. We are not gonna approve any housing development here. Focus your attention on commercial industrial." And they did. And they came up with a project that really works well, and was just approved for a permit by the ZBA. So, you know, this is something we balance, like, no question. Economically for the city, commercial industrial development is the, is the gold standard for economic growth. But we do balance that with the need for housing.
Counselor Robinson, I'm sorry, Counselor Robinson, and then I'll close it out.
If we develop market basket, how would that affect our tax rate?
Any development there is gonna improve the taxes for the rest of the taxpayers in the city. So, that's true of any new development. New growth brings more tax dollars, uh, and benefits every taxpayer.
And just to follow up to the seventy percent about Chelsea residents, is that seventy percent of the ten subsidized units that are set aside? Or is that seventy percent of the overall project?
So typically, it's, in a project, it's seventy percent of the affordable units.
Okay, so if there's ten affordable units, seventy percent of that...
That's the way I understand the preference as allowed by, uh, federal law.
Alright.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, um, you know, uh, we as a council, we have always been, um, proactive with our policies. And we've, in the past years, we've went directly out of con, um, industrial. Listen, let's build up our industrial base. Let's get these companies in here. We've done that. The last few years, this council has taken a strong policy on affordable housing, so we can get the numbers. Yes, we know a lot of folks come from surrounding communities, Somerville, Boston. But we've always put, you know, factors in to try to get sixty percent, sixty to seventy percent Chelsea preferable residents. So, it goes to show what Chelsea is doing for Chelsea folks here. Uh, not all the time. Every hundred percent of affordability goes to Chelsea. But we, as a council, have done that. And we have to keep an eye on what we're doing here. We talk about public safety, we're talking about trash disposal, we talk about... The, this is now what we are shifting the burden to the commercial, to get another base that we need to build up. This, um, this promotion tonight, this recommendation tonight, it's very fair to the residents, and it still include opportunity for affordability and also, um, commercial building. So, I understand that we do have other, um, other ways that we try to give back with the exemptions and stuff. So, again, I encourage each one of you Counselors to have those questions. Just pull the city manager or the department over here, assessors department, and get, uh, a thorough information that when we have this meeting on the twenty-first of November, you can make a conscious decision.
So, I just wanna conclude by saying, this was a wonderful, healthy discussion. But I don't wanna bury the lead. The good news tonight is that the impact on residential taxpayers this year is very modest, and most will see a reduction in the...
Counselor Vito, will you have the last question, please?
Yeah, I wanted to say, um, I don't really wanna get into political, um, conversations, but I just wanna insert in here that shame on the state for not investing more into the, to the, the housing pro, uh, problem that we have in this city, and for us needing to do partnerships like with the one we did at the Innis Development. And I just wanna sit, go on record that while I understand that we can't demand that a hundred percent of the units go to Chelsea, I prefer that at least seventy percent is, um, Chelsea resident preferred. And I appreciate what this administration has done in trying to meet the people where they are. Creating affordable housing for people to be able to stay in the communities that they grew up in. Just wanted to insert that into the conversation.
Go ahead, Counselor.
It's a great thing to have affordable housing. I'm for affordable housing all day long. But I'm for affordable housing for the Chelsea people, for people that live in Chelsea. And then, if you build all this affordable housing, and people from Chelsea can't live there, what is the point? You're not building it for the people of our city. Well, I want affordable housing for the people of our city. You cannot guarantee that to us. But I think in some ways, this city can put forth when, take to our developer, "You're gonna develop?" Okay, eighty percent of the people you put there should be Chelsea residents. I know state law doesn't allow you. But there's something with these developers they come, that you could say to them, "Okay, maybe Chelsea residents have preference." That's, that you can do that. None of them have preference now. So if you, the more you build, the less people can be here.
We have to go, Counselor.
I, I would just say, we do, we do typically get developers that provide a seventy percent Chelsea preference. That's the maximum that is allowed by law. That's the maximum that is allowed by law.
But 70 percent of the Chelsea people don't...
Thank you all, Counsel. We've finished that out. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Five minutes, we'll go into our meeting, regular meeting.